I couldn't, that back door, I think that back door is broken.
You think it's broken?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I couldn't get it.
Crowley did so.
Well.
It did work.
There you go.
Maybe I wasn't timing it right.
Any door works. You guys ready?
Let's roll.
Yeah, okay. The time is 6:00 PM and the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in regular session. This evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Edwin Clark of the First Christian Church.
Could we please join me in a moment of prayer? Our good and our holy God, we give you thanks for this day and the beauty of this earth. And as we give you thanks, we pause in this moment to recognize the brokenness that is upon us. And as we recognize that, Lord, we pray for those who are grieving, those that feel silent. We ask that you help us to hear their voices. May we be the agents of justice and peace and be with the leaders of Dennison as they guide our city. Watch over them, Lord, guide them and direct them. May we also be watched over you with the abounding in love and grace and sorrow to anchor. We pray all these things as you're strong and say together, amen.
Thank you Pastor Clark. Tonight, our, uh, we will be led in the pledge by Officer Jorge Molina of the Dennison Police Department.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Officer Molina. Before we start tonight, I would just like to personally say how really good it feels to be here and not meeting via teleconference. We have not been here since March the sixteenth, right? Was our last meeting in person, so we are, or at least I am. I'm very, very glad to, to be, have the council back in, in open sessions so that our citizens can participate in, in their city government. So, tonight, um, the, we have a presentation of the certificates of election to Councilmember Doty and Councilmember Spiegel. During COVID-19, they were sworn in in a social distancing manner. So, uh, tonight, we would like to recognize them, so Ms. Wallantine.
Good evening Mayor and Council. As you know, COVID has totally thrown everything out of the norm, so, um, our election was canceled. We did swear in, um, Councilmember Doty and Councilmember Spiegel on May twelfth. So, we will now present their certificates of election, which is the only piece we haven't done, so. If you guys want to come down here or you want, okay. And I'll just read this real quick. Certificate of election in the name and by the authority of the City of Dennison, Texas. This is to certify that Christopher Spiegel was an unopposed candidate for the May second, 2020 general election and is duly elected as Councilmember at large, place five. There you go. And J.C. Doughty, an unopposed candidate for the May second, 2020 general election and duly elected as Councilmember, single member, district, place three.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you gentlemen. We appreciated that you chose to serve another year. Three years actually, right? Um, item three, public comments. At this point in each council meeting, time is set aside for citizens to speak on action items listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and returned to the city clerk prior to reaching the public comments section of the agenda. Ms. Wallantine, do we have any wishing to speak?
No.
Okay, and comments related to the public hearings listed on the agenda will be heard at that specific, uh, agenda item is heard. Uh, item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, sign. Motion carries. Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the co-compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at four twenty-seven East Maple Row and take action. Mr. Lay.
All right, good evening Mayor and Council. It is good to be back with you tonight. On May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, Alan J. Robotham, Audrey Robotham and Henry Blevins were given notice to repair or demolish the structure at four twenty-seven East Maple Row. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with chapter thirteen, article seven, section thirteen dash one fifty-seven, five eight and fourteen of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. Uh, the property was worked for minimum property standards in June, two thousand nineteen with no results. The structure has since been vacated. The appraised value of the improvement is fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars in two thousand twenty. The taxes are current. There's been no water service at the structure since January seventh of this year. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is ove, open and evidence of vagrant activity is observed. Uh, the structure is not weather tight and is a danger to collapse. The record of violations, notices and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the co-compliance department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. Take any questions?
Questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at four twenty-seven East Maple Row a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Pander and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the co-compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at four twenty-eight West Elm and take action. Mr. Lay.
Okay, on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, Robert Harris, Dorothy Harris and Robert Harris Jr. were given notice violation to repair or demolish the structure at four twenty-eight West Elm. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with chapter thirteen, article seven dash thirteen, one fifty-seven, eight, thirteen and fourteen of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. The appraised value of the improvement was fifty thousand, eight dollars in two thousand twenty. Current taxes owed total sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and the taxes have not been paid since two thousand six. There's been no water service at the residence since August twelve, two thousand fifteen. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is open and evidence of vagrant activity is observed. The structure is not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition. A record of the violations, notices and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the co-compliance department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at four twenty-eight West Elm a nuisance and unsafe and to order demolition and authorize the staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Greenlee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item five C, receive a report, hold a discussion and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the co-compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at nine twenty West Chase and take action. Mr. Lay.
Okay, on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty, Ruth Hanning Fagan, Mary Lambert, James Alfred Hanning in the estate of Ruth Laverne Fagan were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at nine twenty West Chase. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with chapter thirteen, article seven, section thirteen dash one fifty-seven, seven, eight, thirteen and fourteen of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. The appraised value of the improvement was three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars in two thousand twenty. Taxes are current. There has been no water service since August sixth, two thousand three. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is not weather tight. The roof is in poor condition and the structure is leaning. Get a good picture of that, due to, uh, foundation repair, or failure. Uh, there's a record of violations, notices and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the co-compliance department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at nine twenty West Chase a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenlee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lay. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on the appointment of a mayor pro temp to serve a one-year term. Each year, at the first meeting in June, uh, the mayor pro temp position rotates to another council member. I would like to thank Teresa Adams for serving for the last year and the great job that she did. And so, is there a motion from the council for a mayor pro temp?
Mayor, I move to appoint, uh, Councilmember J.C. Doty as mayor pro temp to serve a one-year term.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. Job well, job well done Teresa.
All right, item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion and consider entering into a contract with Piazza Construction for construction manager at risk, R-C-M-A-R, services for phase one of the designing downtown Dennison, a D-three project and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Mr. Rex.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Uh, it's good to be with you tonight in person. Uh, and I'm excited to recommend that we move forward with, uh, with the next step in the D-three project. I forgot to get the clicker. Can you go to the next slide? Thanks Chris. Uh, so this process, uh, for selecting a construction manager at risk started back in January when we issued a request for proposals. Um, that led to, uh, that generated two proposals, one from Piazza Construction, one from Hill and Wilkinson. Our design steering committee, which is made up of the individuals you see listed there, um, conducted two rounds of interviews and really thoroughly vetted both, both firms. And, uh, tonight, we are happy to recommend Piazza Construction, um, to move forward with on the construction manager, as our construction manager at risk. Um, they really stood out with, uh, their staff's experience, the project experience. They've certainly done a number of projects for Dennison before. Um, they have a competitive fee and, and, uh, feel that we can, we feel that they can meet our scheduling needs for the project. Next slide, Chris. Uh, so we are, uh, recommending that we move forward with Piazza Construction for pre-construction. And just to give you a sense for what that schedule looks like, um, we would, uh, City Council, of course, is considering the contract tonight, June first. Uh, we have a pre-construction kickoff meeting, uh, that we're looking at scheduling in the middle of June uh, with our design steering committee. Really from June to September, uh, kind of that three, four month period. Piazza is going to be working with Tool Design Group, our design steering committee and the city, uh, to do the pre-construction work, which will take the plans where they're at right now. Will, will bid out the different components of the project and get, get, um, more precise pricing on the project. Uh, do some value engineering and further, uh, further the design work as well. Um, and then really come October, and this is a, uh, just a rough schedule. They will, Piazza will submit a guaranteed maximum price and a proposed timeline for the project uh, that we can consider at that time, uh, with the full context of, of the economy and everything else that's needed to move the project forward. So, uh, we'd like to go ahead and, and move on to pre-construction and recommend Piazza Construction. Uh, their fee would be, um, twelve thousand dollars for the pre-construction services over the next few months. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve entering into the contract with Piazza Construction for a construction manager and risk services for phase one of the designing downtown Dennison, or D-three, project and authorize the city manager to execute the same, subject to final legal review and approval.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenlee and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Well, it's become real now, hasn't it? Mr. Piazza, we're glad you're on board.
Thank you very much. Thank you for talking.
Um, item six C, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a commercial lease for the property located at four hundred West Chestnut for use as a public parking lot and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Mr. Rex.
Thank you. While we're on the topic of downtown, uh, we've been presented an opportunity to help uh, provide additional public parking in the downtown area. Uh, this will not only help during the construction project, uh, to provide off-street parking, uh, but it will also long-term be a good, uh, a good move for the city to have additional public parking within a block of Main Street and near a key site, which is, uh, the Dennison Hotel. Uh, next slide, Chris. Uh, so the property is located at the southwest corner of Chestnut, Chestnut and Burnett, um, as indicated on the site. Uh, it's right across from the Dennison Hotel, um, near Forest Park and Main Street. Um, it's really a key site and location. Uh, the property owners have, um, proposed a ten-year lease for the city, um, at one thousand dollars per month. Chris, if you want to go to the next slide. A thousand dollars per month until the certificate, certificate of occupancy is issued for the Dennison Hotel, after which it would be two thousand per month. Uh, so, our plan and proposal is to develop the site into a parking lot. Uh, we've talked with our public works department and we'd be ready to move forward with, um, demoing the, the existing canopies and structures that are on the site. Taking the, taking the pavement down to subgrade, kind of resurfacing it, putting, laying some new asphalt and restriping it for parking. Uh, we think we can get about sixty parking spaces in there, uh, depending on the layout. We also want to go ahead and improve the sidewalk around the property as well to make sure that it's accessible and, and you can get in and out, not just cars, but people as well. Um, it'll also provide some good overflow parking for, uh, football games at Munson Park and other events in Forest Park, sorry, Munson Stadium, um, in Forest Park. So, uh, really good, good strategic location there and, and frankly, a real competitive, uh, lease rate for us as well. So, uh, I mean, you're looking at six, sixty parking spaces for about twelve thousand dollars per year, which is really, really good. Um, as far as what we would, how we would pay for the improvements upfront, um, it's going to be kind of a combination of our street improvement funds and Ters number three. Uh, long-term, we would, uh, pay for the lease out of Ters number three, uh, that twelve thousand dollars per year. So, with that, um, I do recommend approval of the lease and, uh, we, we were anxious to move forward with it and happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the commercial lease for the property located at four hundred West Chestnut for use as a public parking lot and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rex. Item six D, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I'm so glad to see each of you in person. Um, sorry I'm not as funny as I was last week, carrying around my phone. Hannah was like, I'm dandy and dizzy, right? Anyway, um, we're here tonight to take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Um, we did this just a few months back, um, but now that was on the fire station, of course, and the ladder truck. Now, we feel comfortable enough to move forward with our streets and with some water and sewer projects, so I'm excited about this. During the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget process, staff brought before council certain improvement projects and equipment for approval. Among the requests were waterworks and sewer system improvements based on the utility's capital improvement plan. Um, utility projects covered under this bond include, but not limited to Teresa Waterlines, the secondary clarifier troughs, utilities for recon, street reconstruction projects on Loy Lake Road, as well as Flora Lane and Water Lake, Waterloo Lake Drive and the Grayson Water Tower. Street improvements are based on the street CIP prod, um, project that we put together. And this covers Flora Lane, Loy Lake Road and Waterloo Lake Drive. Um, back in September of two thousand nineteen, council approved moving forward with the improvement projects and equipment and adopted a reimbursing resolution at the time. Council did approve ordinances in April for refunding a previous bonds and for west end fire station remodel and a ladder truck for Dennison Fire Rescue. Staff is now bringing before council a resolution for publication of notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for the above improvement projects and equipment. If approved, the next steps will be for staff to cause to be published the required notice on two separate occasions in the Herald Democrat and to post that notice on our city's website. And these both are required by law. Once the publication has ran and all noticing is completed, staff will bring back to council on August third of this year, um, and propose ordinance for council to consider, which will actually authorize the issuance of those certificates. Um, the water and sewer amount is four point five million and those payments will come from the utility bond fund via transfer from the water sewer operating fund. And the street improvement funds, street improvements will be seven point two million and payments will come from property taxes that we set aside in the street improvement fund. Staff recommends, um, approving this resolution, um, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenlee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item seven A, provide an update on downtown minimum property standards initiatives. Mr. Lay.
Okay, so I'm happy to get to share with you guests tonight, um, some of the work that co-compliance has been doing downtown in the past couple of years, um, and even expand that to some of the things that are going on around town in regards to minimum property standards as well. So, back when many, the minimum property standard ordinance was adopted in two thousand twelve. Council, most years, we've missed a few, did, um, kind of set a target area of what we were going to focus on for the year. Back in two thousand eighteen, early in the year, um, I believe some of you may have been on the council then. And, um, we decided we would work downtown, uh, property standards and we got to work on that. It's really been a big collaboration between a bunch of different people. Bill and Kimberly in Historic Preservation and Donna and Melanie in Main Street, Betty and her team in the building department and, you know, William over at DDA. We've all had a big part in pushing these projects through, um, and having the success we've had. You know, the team has met with property owners, been on the phone for hours with these guys and meetings for hours, just trying to help them have ideas, help them to get off high center. Sometimes it's having to kind of give them a real good kickstart. We got to get this going. You know, when we first proposed this back in two thousand eighteen, um, some of the things that we were looking at were, of course, building facades, the front of those. But we focused a lot on the signage as well and the alleys. So, to date, we've completed twenty-four commercial projects downtown. Uh, we still have six projects that are ongoing on some level and I'm going to visit with you about, um, some of that, uh, going forward. So, I want to share with you some of the successes that we've had. Now, the first one is three twelve West Main, obviously, in the left. That's what the facade looked like. That was one of the original pictures that I took. And when we brought this to council way back then and presentations to the downtown folks, we showed this and the owners, they were really good about it. Kind of gave me a hard time that I was picking on their building and all. But, um, the Solomons, you know, over the course of the past eighteen months or so, have completed the facade of their building and you can see what we have now versus what we had. They did a tremendous job there. So, this is three twelve West Chestnut. This is immediately behind City Hall. You can see in that though, really the, both sides of the building, the facade were renovated. Uh, the canopy was renovated and it just makes a huge impact when you're driving. So, I kind of did this one backwards. So, as you're driving west on Main Street, this is the, the, uh, east wall of six oh five West Main Street. So, as you're driving down Main, you just see a wall, right? I mean, you don't really notice, your eye doesn't go there. Let me show you what it looked like before. When you were driving down Main, I mean, it was a simple repair, but it just makes a tremendous impact just what they did there and it didn't take a lot. So, um, and that's what a lot of these projects are. You don't, you really take your eye to the eye sores and when they get repaired, you just kind of go on by. And, and you know, that's fine. So, we talked about alleys as well. This is the back of the Hubbard Building at the corner of Austin and Main. So, when you come across the viaduct and your eyes hit Main Street, if you're coming from the south, that's what you would see. So, repairing the back of the building makes, anyway, because it's one of the first impressions you get when you see that. They have redone the whole building, sides and front and all, but wanted to show you the impacts the back can have as well. Same thing here, this is the back of five ten West Main, the Main Street Motors Building. It's highly visible from Chestnut. Um, there's a parking lot that's right in front of it, um, that connects to the SNAP Center, of course. And now, when you drive by, it's hard to remember it looking so bad. So, Mr. Conley did a great job with the back of his building as well. I did mention that we have ongoing projects downtown to kind of give you an update on some of those ones that are really big dominos that still need to fall. So, two oh one West Main, it's the, also the corner of Austin and Main. It's the old pawn shop there, one-story pawn shop. So, not long, I guess, after we got minimum property standard, sorry, they did go to HP to get a plan approved and it got denied there. Their project did a pretty much high center there. Uh, later on in the summer of last year, the team met with them on-site to kind of get them off a high center. And they've been working on their plans really. them off a high center, and they've been working on their plans really since then. Happy to report, they should be going to HP, not the meeting tomorrow, but the next meeting in June to get a conditional approval for the plans that they have. What I've seen of it, I think everyone will be happy with what they have planned for that. So the next one to give you an update on is two oh seven West Main. It is currently, it has a computer store in the bottom, just right down here on the two-hundred block. Unfortunately, we have not made much headway with that property. The notices have gone kind of ignored, I guess, is the best way to put that. Unfortunately, the step we're going to take is tomorrow at the Historic Preservation Meeting. The board will be voting whether or not to open a demolition by neglect case on that property. Don't think that we're talking about tearing the building down. Demolition by neglect more means that the owner is allowing the building to deteriorate on its own, not that the city's trying to move in to demo the building. So the HP board will hear that case tomorrow, so we'll have more updates in the future. And obviously, probably the biggest project downtown is the Denison Hotel that they're actively working on. You know, we know Casey's team's going to do a great job. I know that is, you know, making steady progress. So before I move on to the next portion, does anybody have any questions about downtown minimum property standards, the actions? Okay, high visibility minimum property standards have been a focus. You know, in two thousand seventeen, the council approved to do Austin Avenue for high visibility minimum property standards. We started working on that. Then in two thousand eighteen, we kind of shifted our focus again downtown, and then in two thousand nineteen, we shifted our focus back again to high visibility areas. What we think of as a high visibility area is a main corridor through Denison, whether that's Morton Street, Austin Avenue, Texoma Parkway, Crawford Street, Armstrong, or Woodlawn, also areas that surround our schools and surround our parks. We, you know, the thinking of that is, where are people that are coming in from out of town, where are they going? You know, are they thinking about moving a business here? How are they getting to downtown? You know, are they, when they visit our parks, what are they seeing? So we're trying to put our best foot forward. So we've been actively doing that for, going on three years now. Can say we do have seventy-two completed projects in those areas. We have forty-two others that are ongoing currently. That can either be, again, we're trying to get someone going, their projects are in progress, or, you know, unfortunately, some of them have got to citation mode where we're trying to still get them going. So some of our high visibility successes that we know we're proud of, obviously, this is the old Cold Construction Building that is now the Texoma Woodworks Building there on Morton Street. Here's another one that if you, you know, if you don't really know it's there, it doesn't, you don't understand the impact it makes, but this is just a little, you know, machine that you can walk up and get eyes at. I mean, and before, it looked terrible with the rust down the end of it. The graphics were faded, needed to be painted, got with the owner. They totally redid it. Now you don't notice it because it doesn't look bad, so.
Mr. Lay, real quick on that one. That's a great success. Is there anything we can do about that parking lot there in that area? Have we talked about that?
That's a private parking lot. We had, yeah.
You about fall into that pothole.
Oh, I know, it's bad. Where the snow cone sand is.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's been real popular during the pandemic as well.
Yes.
Hundreds of cars lined up in that parking lot, which is great. Okay, gotcha.
And last, just an example of one of our high visibility residences that, you know, looked so bad, rotten wood, had no weatherproofing on it, needed roof repairs, and owners put some TLC into it, and now when you're driving, you can, this is highly visible from Crawford Street, you know, you just, you don't notice it because it looks, you know, like it's supposed to, so. So going forward with minimum property standards, our code compliance team is going to be getting in to some of the interior neighborhoods of Denison. If you've lived in Denison long, you know that unfortunately, we can go in some neighborhoods that basically block after block, you know, they need work. You can quickly drown in those areas. So we have to be strategic when we move forward doing that. So what we've kind of started to focus on is where has there been development? You know, just new homes, you know, we have new homes that just pop up in just random blocks, you know, and that's to fill in our vacant lots. So we've gone and we want to recognize where that's happened and what's around it and start targeting some of those areas, also, you know, if they're under construction now. So staff has initially identified over a hundred residences that fit into this category that we can start working on. You know, when code does minimum property standards on a property, it isn't just, you know, send out a notice in thirty days if you don't comply, it's, you know, we issue you a citation. You know, we, the first thing we always want to do when we were dealing with these property owners is open up some dialogue. Most projects takes way longer than thirty days, but we just want to open that up and work with them through the process, you know, and let them know there are resources available. If you have an economic hardship, we have money available through CDBG that we can help people that need the help. So we don't just go in and not have a, you know, a willing spirit. So just a couple of examples, you know, of areas we're looking for. Again, a new build with a house beside it that's basically falling down. We're trying to get, you know, places like that moving or that are under construction, and what's next door to it, you know, isn't easy on the eyes, and we want to try to get it there, for sure, so. You know, going forward, code's going to continue to focus on downtown stuff. There's still some small projects that need to get finished or maybe be even initiated still. Still work our high visibility areas. We don't want to lose any momentum that we've gained and any of the gains that we have. Our code officers work hard to identify what's needed, you know, and they're committed to helping improve our neighborhoods and revitalize those. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay?
Good work. Brave work.
Thank you.
You guys are working hard.
Thanks to your team. You guys are doing a great job, and all you have to do is just drive around Denison, and you can see it.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to them. They do work hard, for sure.
Thank you. That was an information item only, so no action required by the council. Item eight, executive session. Pursuant to chapter five-five-one Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplations, contemplated settlement of the same, section five-five-one dot zero seven one. Consult with the city attorney on laws related to public improvement districts, tax increment reinvestment zones, and potential development in the ETJ. Consultation with city county, city attorney regarding administrative complaint styled TG and MG and FG versus Denison Independent School District. Discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment of duties, discipline or dismissal of or to hear a complaint against a public officer or employee, section five-five-one dot zero seven four. Receive update related to complaint filed relating to school resource officers. In order for the council to continue to practice social distancing, we're going to ask that the council chamber be cleared so that we can conduct our executive session here in the council chamber. If you are part of the executive session, please remain, otherwise we'll ask you to leave.